Now, a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority called order at 3:08 PM on February 18th, 2014. May we have a roll call for the City Council?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Ajarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here.
And for the Housing Authority.
Authority members Friedman.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Ajarian.
Here.
Rosian.
Here.
Tarot.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Sinanian.
Here.
May we have your report?
Agenda for the February 18th, 2014 joint public meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, February 13, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Before you today is the Director of Community Development regarding proposed YMCA 70-unit affordable rental housing project, Glendale Arts Colony, to be located at 121 North Kenwood Street. One A is council motion approving a five-foot setback variance for eight balconies associated with the project. B is a council motion approving stage one and two design review, subject to comments and conditions of approval. C is authority resolution authorizing execution of a letter of loan commitment with Meta Housing Corporation. D is authority resolution appropriating $6,160,000 through the funding of the project.
Thank you. Mr. Achua.
Yes, sir. And may it please the Board and the City Council. We have a project that you are very familiar with. You have the considerable drawings in your packets. And so with that, I'm going to move through the staff presentation, and we'll get through fairly quickly to allow a maximum amount of time for council discussion, Agency Housing Authority Board discussion. And certainly, if you have any specific questions with respect to the project, its complexity, the financing, our housing staff is here, as well as the design development team, if you want to get into the various elements that are contained in your packet.
Mr. Achua, just so the public understands, this is our fourth. We've already met four times on this item. So this is the conclusion, hopefully.
What is before you? Basically, we are looking for very specific actions from the City Council Housing Authority Board. There is, as part of this project, setbacks variance, the stage one and two design reviews by the City Council, and then by the Housing Authority, two different actions. The execution of a letter of loan commitment and resolution of appropriation that will manifest the assistance given to the project by the Housing Authority, should you decide to go that way. As you alluded to, Mr. Mayor, this discussion began nearly two years ago in May. The YMCA, working with another private developer, submitted a project proposal as part of an RFQ, RFP process. Ultimately, the Housing Authority decided to go in a different direction, spread those home funds primarily across several other projects, and advised the YMCA Board that perhaps, in order to maximize the full utility of their site, they could work with housing staff for a separate round of funding, such as what we're dealing with at this point in time. Later, the YMCA did opt to work with staff vis-à-vis the Authority Board or the Housing Authority Board to develop an RFP. And the idea at that point was to develop this creative workforce housing, this arts colony that is before you today. The RFP was more than just your typical RFP. It actually involved a great deal of the specific design. Thus, we are moving rather quickly at this point in time with respect to the design elements and some of the features of the building itself. The Agency or the Authority Board and City Council really has looked at a construct for the achievement of goals, stated goals, as they reflect your City Council priorities. As you know, balanced housing, economic development, land use and planning, and certainly support of quality of life are all priorities that you adhere to over the course of the various budgets, adoption meetings, and hearings that you hold. What you see here, along the bottom, is the baseline goal that you have outlined for us, the creation of quality, affordable housing. And if we are going to do quality, affordable housing in Glendale, then we start to level or layer on other goals as seen fit by the Authority Board. Land use appropriateness, making sure we're putting the right project in the right place for the right reasons to serve the community that needs this quality, affordable housing. Economic synergy. So if we're going to have affordable housing, and we're going to have the right project in the right place for the right reasons, then we also will try to ensure that the intermix of the residents who are living in that house or in that housing have some back and forth with the area around them by way of stimulating the local economy and revitalizing the neighborhood. And then finally, to the extent that you're able to strengthen community partners and community institutions, it really is the, it wouldn't be the hat trick, that's only three, but here we have four goals that are being met by this proposed project. And so, we bring that to you as kind of a reflection of what the Council, the shot that the Council identified early on, and the recognition that you're able to do those things by way of this project. So the RFP did lead to Meta Housing being selected for this particular project in October. As again alluded to by the Mayor, the matter came back to you for an exclusive negotiation agreement. The ENA really was predicated on the 70-unit project, and it would serve the 60% and below average median income for the county. The preference that would be provided for a creative workforce and artists was something that was pronounced, but rest assured that again, 100% of the units would go to affordable housing. And if you could not fill the units with members of the, as be determined, creative workforce and artists, then the spillover, the residual units would go, again, to affordable income households. That we would also pursue all the entitlements for site control by March, and that has put the project team in line for the TCAC funding for the tax credit element of the financing. The folks at Meta Housing, I won't spend too much time on this, you've seen it several times now, by all accounts, a renowned housing developer, affordable housing developer, with a tremendous track record for this particular type of project as it was originally outlined by the Agency Board or the Authority Board. In the course of the RFP, and an RFP that was reviewed both by city staff as well as by the YMCA, Meta was able to really identify and demonstrate an understanding of all of these factors. And I want to make sure that that's pointed out because in this line of work, a joint venture is something of an urban legend. People talk about them a great deal, but don't really ever see them in reality. Here, you have not just a joint venture between a city, a government entity, and a non-government organization NGO like the Y, but also the private sector. And usually, you don't see that degree of collaboration and partnership. Here is the project site, as you know. The YMCA's gymnasium is here, the SRO Hotel is here. The two pieces of property that are apartments for rent are here on this location, and you can see that the YMCA has stated in their initial goals to generate funding for capital improvement and additional parking. This is the opportunity that they bring, this large site. So when you look at the project site, the SRO is not a part. That is a historic building that we seek to protect and enhance. You do have the turnabout that would be here off of Louise, I'm sorry, not Louise, Kenwood. I got it backwards. Yeah, it's Louise, Kenwood over here. And then the actual main project site on this side. Again, what we are asking for is a setback variance. The balconies that are on Kenwood Street are within the six-foot setback. We do have on floors two through five balconies on each floor. And of course, as staff has reviewed this, in conjunction with the YMCA, we are supporting the variance request. In terms of historical resources, this review was done. Architecture Resources Group did look at these two properties. Neither are eligible for listing on the National or the State or the Glendale Register for that matter, and it was reviewed by the HPC earlier this winter. Just a little bit of breakdown of the project. The name of the project from Meta Housing Corporation, Glendale Arts Colony, it's 100% affordable. It would be rental for family housing, but the 70 units, you see the breakdown there, 14 one-bedrooms, 34 two-bedrooms, 22 three-bedrooms, and that does intimate at the profile of the folks that generally are going to live in these units by way of the number of bedrooms in each unit. Average sizes from 610 to 1160 square feet. It's about five stories in height, 277 parking spots, with the breakdown being 151 for the YMCA and 126 for the project, and almost 8,500 square feet of community space. We are looking at about a $30 million project, approximately $427,000 per unit construction cost. That's in the ballpark with our other projects. And draw your attention down here, the $6.1 million loan assistance from the GHA at $87,000 per unit is actually, makes it one of the more affordable projects from the standpoint of our investments, an efficient investment on the part of the GHA. There is a capitalized ground lease payment to the YMCA coming in the form of $3.5 million in cash, $2 million in the value of the parking, $20 million in tax credits. You see here, something I alluded to just a second ago, in terms of unit costs, here the Glendale Arts Colony proposed at $427 per unit. Veterans Village at $464, that's about to break ground tomorrow. Gardens on Garfield is $459. And again, you see what the subsidy per unit is, making this at 70 units a pretty cost-efficient investment on the part of the GHA. There are some additional considerations, no doubt. This is something that has come up, and we as staff are very sensitive to respect the Council and Authority Board's wishes. First and foremost, the timing of this hearing, again, we're trying to meet the TCAC hearing in March, that's Tax Credit Allocation Committee, that this entire project relies upon. These are California tax credits, and so the housing is affordable to the people of California. Yet it's worth noting that in our previous experiences with other projects, that the Housing Authority has developed well north of three-fourths and actually approaching 90% of the folks that end up in these units are already today Glendale and Glendale-area residents. We will have to come back to you later with an affordable housing agreement. And as part of that affordable housing agreement, the all-important definition of artist and creative workforce will have to be determined at that time. Again, not an action today, but something that you'll have to be thinking about. And because you're thinking about it, I'm sure you see in your presentation what the working definition of artist is. This working definition comes both from the developer that has done these types of projects elsewhere, staff recommendations, and again, the idea here is not just somebody who practices in one form or discipline of art, but it's generally rather liberal in terms of artisans as well as artists, as well as folks in the creative industry that really is a major part of the local economy. Further, when we talk about the definition of artist, as questions have come up from the agent, the Authority Board members, in terms of the 100% threshold that it is today as directed previously by the Authority Board, in consultation with the developer, in order for the arts colony to truly take root, there's a critical mass of at least 60% of the units, 42 of the 70 units, that would need to be designated or preference given for artist or creative workforce, however that's ultimately defined. So somewhere between that 60 to 100, to keep consistent with what the previous direction has been, is the spectrum for this particular project as it was originally envisioned. In terms of that selection committee, if you're wondering who would decide who is and who is not an artist regardless of the threshold, that's a composition approved by the Housing Authority. And generally speaking, the higher the threshold, the more liberal the definition could be. The lower the threshold, generally speaking, the more conservative the definition is going to be. Again, we're trying to achieve that critical mass for the idea of, again, that land use appropriateness. This is a piece of property, a project, that is immediately adjacent to the downtown and the arts and entertainment district, which separates it apart from general types of affordable housing deals that the Agency or the Authority Board has done previously. And again, I can't stress it enough that any residual units, units that cannot be filled by those folks that meet the definitions, however they may be defined, as artist or creative workforce, ultimately will make their hands into affordable households. This project will be 100% affordable. At this point, if you have specific questions about the project financials, Mr. Zovak, Mr. Fortney are here, and if you have any questions about the YMCA's role, their preferences, their goals, many of the Board members are here. And lastly, the project team from Meta is here, if you'd like to review their drawings that are in your packet.
Okay. As I said, we've had four meetings. We've also all met privately, one at a time, with staff and with Meta and the Y, so we've got a pretty good understanding of the project up to now. So my colleagues don't have any particular questions at this point. I would suggest we go to the public, and then we can talk. Is that okay? Okay. Does anybody else want to turn a card in? Either turn it in now or hold your piece. Okay? Hold cards. Okay, I won't accept any more cards after this. So first speaker is Meredith Gold, three minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Meredith Gold. My husband, Michael Belzer, and I own a company called Westside Management Group, and we manage the building that is right next door to this proposed project at 141 North Kenwood Street. I'm here hoping to get a little bit more information for our owner. We are the resident managers of this building, but we also manage many properties for other owners. I guess, I'm happy to hear that I can perhaps talk to some of the builders. We did receive a phone call at the end of last year from the builder saying, "We just wanted to let you know that this project is, you know, probably going to happen, and it may involve digging under your building." It was sort of a cryptic thing, and not scary or anything, but just trying to give us a heads up. And obviously, this will impact our tenants. We do have a very nice building. We actually have the only residential building in the whole block. It's the churches, the post office, the Y, and us. And we have really a nice standard for rents that we charge. We screen our tenants really carefully, and we have one of the nicer buildings in the whole area. So we are very concerned about what would be going in next door and how it might impact our tenants, understandably. I know that construction is construction, so that'll be a nightmare for us for however long that takes. But the words affordable housing, and like, there are some items that have caught our owner's ear for sure, and I'm really here today to let you know that this project will impact us, and we're very hopeful that it won't in any way detract from the value of our building. Our building is worth about $5 million right now. And we really, that's based on the combined rents that we're able to charge. And I'm hoping to get a sense of what rents might be charged right next door to us. I just know that there's a whole bunch of building happening in Glendale right now. Much of it is rather high-end. And so, from an owner's point of view, in terms of the value of his property, we are concerned about what impact it might have on him to have units right next door in a nice new building that are considerably less. And we may have no say in it, and that's that, but I just wanted to let you know because, excuse me, again, we're the only residential building that will be impacted by this.
Would you like to have meetings with some of the staff to explain it all?
That would be great. We're grateful.
Okay. We'll get your card passed back. You can put your phone number on there, and staff will call you and set up the meetings.
Very fine. Thank you for your time. Thanks.
All right, Leo. Next speaker is Beresh Karpetian.
Hi, Beresh Karpetian, Armenian National Committee. I'm here to speak regarding some of the items that were presented by management today versus what was in the reports, so I'm a little bit unsure what are the numbers. Here it was presented, 5.5 million in terms of the participation by YMCA. On the report that was posted on Friday, it was 3.5 million, so I don't know where the deviation comes from. In the reports approved by the City Council and the funding levels, the participation or the total cost of the project for the Veterans Village was listed at a lot lower than what was presented here, so I don't know how it has jumped up by almost $100,000. I hope those will be addressed by you. I see that you're talking about the definition of artists being left for a future time. It becomes a little difficult for those of us who want to see more affordable and senior housing in the city, available to residents of the city, be able to comment on the merit of going forward with this project when we don't know how you're going to define it in the future, or if it's going to be limited to just 60, or 40, or 50% being artists. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Rick Barnes.
Good afternoon, Rick Barnes. Not here for the Association of Realtors, not here for any commission, not here for running for office. I'm here because I'm looking at this, and in that area, I just heard there's only, that's apartments, the only residential. We have condominiums, all kinds of other apartments and condominiums in that same area. When I'm looking at $427,000 a square foot, number one, I think that's an outrageous cost. The $456 and all the others that you guys have paid on housing that you generated is outside of what I think is normal. The reason I say that is I work with Barnett Brothers, who have over $500 million in construction. They have $275 million online coming up. They did not hear about this. They would have been more than happy to come in and make a bid. I think that we're doing a disservice to the residents of the community by not having an open bid. You have a program here, it should go to open bid. It should make certain that everybody in the state or in the country knows that this is available. This is prime property, number one. Number two, it's in the downtown section. The other part that I'm looking at is for artists, I've been trying to look through our fair housings, to try and, how do we segregate just artists from away the rest of the folks? Under fair housing rules, I could not find anything that would give us a right to have fair housing for just artistic people. The other one is that I really believe that it's time to slow it down right now and let the other construction be built. You don't know what you're doing to us as property owners that have rents that are out there. What are we adjusting to when you don't have the others already built? They're not leased, and we are at a low vacancy, but at the same time, the minute you open those up, what are you going to do to the other property owners? So in my mind, I think you should put a pause on this. I know there's California funds available. They're going to be available next year. The economy's changing. It's time to stop this, put it on a back burner, start getting more competitive bids, and make certain that we have the best builder, best developer. There's a lot of builders out there that do community funds development. Again, Rick Barnes, thank you.
Mr. Achua, I know companies I know bid on this. How was it opened up?
I defer to Mr. Fortney because the outreach was considerable, and we got, we sent out many, many, many RFPs. Certainly, this was not done in any kind of vacuum, and we got back considerable response. Mike or Peter, if you guys want to just talk very briefly about what the outreach was, and then also about the unit construction costs, because I'm not, in terms of affordable housing, aware of new ground-up podium-style projects that are coming in for a heck of a lot less than what we're looking at.
With regards to the issuance of the RFP and how that was marketed, we did provide a couple of reports on the methodology for that, and I'll go ahead and summarize what we did. Throughout the last few years, we've had developers in general approach the city and express an interest in developing housing, so we've placed them on an interest list with the Housing Authority. We marketed out to that group. We assessed all of the market rate developers that were in and around the downtown proposing and building at that time. We assembled those lists of developers and marketed the RFP to them as well. We marketed the RFP to the membership of the Southern California Association Nonprofit Housing Group. We also marketed the memberships of the now-defunct California Redevelopment Association. We worked with the PIO Office in issuing out the RFP through electronic means. We issued it through sites that were known to be monitored by affordable housing and market rate housing developers, some of the internet sites that we've done, and we did a... There's one more, and it escapes me, but we shipped out...
You were pretty extensive in your outreach.
Well, we did Facebook, and I lumped that under the electronic marketing that we did.
You really did Facebook?
Yes. Yes, we did. If not Facebook, it was Twitter through an announcement.
Yes, Mr. Barnes's company may not have been paying enough attention on Facebook. They should spend more time on Facebook.
But we did try and reach a large audience with the RFP. And I know not all the developers were in Southern California. We had some that we issued out to in Chicago, Florida, groups like that, that were on one of those directories of membership roles.
So you have at least 15 responding?
We had about 15.
I believe we had 10.
10. Well, that was up at 15.
And we did solicit both market rate and affordable housing in the RFP.
Okay. Was there any other question we needed answered?
To Mr. Karpetian's questions, maybe we go back to the project economics, because it seems the numbers repeat there. Art, can you put me back on there?
I'll let Mike Fortney walk through with the different elements.
Yeah, the question came up with respect to the lease payment, the capitalized lease payment. So we value it at 5.5 million, but the YMCA would only receive 3.5 million in cash. The balance of the $2 million is the cost of the parking. And it kind of addresses another question of why the costs are so much. We have an additional 151 parking spaces in the project for the Y. Again, we value that at $2 million, so that brings the project cost up, so the per-unit cost is artificially inflated. There's also the 1,000-square-foot art gallery that also adds cost to that. So that said, it's $5.5 million capitalized ground lease. $3.5 million is the payment to the YMCA, along with $2 million worth of parking. So there's also residual receipts, but I don't think that question...
And I'm told that the YMCA desperately needs parking. They're out of parking now. That would be bad.
Oh, yes, they do.
They do.
Right down, right down the streets around there, and you'll see it. Okay? Any other questions? Yes.
Yeah. And feel free to jump in, housing staff or city manager. Okay, so currently, there is a low-income housing building on the premises where project is to be realized, or no?
There are no affordable and covered, I saw you do this.
There is an apartment, is it an apartment building? Is that what it is?
There are two apartment buildings, one's 22-unit, one's 40-unit. The rents are low, but they're not, there's no cover time.
Thank you. So the city's allocating certain funding to make a low-income housing project possible? Is that correct?
Yes, $6.1 million.
$6.1. And where does that money come from?
That is our low-mod income housing asset funds.
Okay.
So no home funds, that's our other source.
Okay, thank you. And so, assuming, let's say, this project moves forward today, do we have any more funds like that left over for any other projects?
We have a little over $1 million in home funds now, and we expect about another $900,000 in home funds in July.
Is that money sufficient to really realize any significant low-income housing program?
I think it is.
Well, I'll bring an example. That's a good point. We've been talking about a project on Fifth and Sonora for some time. Is that money sufficient to start that project on any level?
Right. If we were to do a project on Fifth, say we're bringing Fifth and Sonora to you today with the hopes of going and getting approved in March 2014, I think we probably could get a project there without even using those home funds. We sunk $6 million into the project. That counts towards our contribution. So that $6 million today would probably get us a project. You know, next tax credit round, the tax credit round after that, I couldn't tell you if that alone would do it, or if we would need to put in that $1 or $2 million. But I think, I think we could get $2 million into a project on top of the $6 million we've already paid for Fifth and Sonora and get a project of significant size.
So we can start, we can start the project on Sonora and Fifth sometime soon?
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to do that? Do we have, do we have an ETA on that?
We are bringing back, if you recall, the approval, either last meeting or a meeting before, with a design firm to give us preliminary projects or concepts. That would probably take the form of like a design charrette in the next month or so. That comes back to the Authority Board. You pick some concept you want to see, and then Mike and Peter are off to the races.
And of course, we would advocate for a request for proposals, an open process.
Right, right. So an RFP would happen within...
Before the end of the fiscal year.
Before the end of fiscal year? Before the end of 2014, '15 fiscal year or 2014...
No, this current fiscal year. By June 30th, I would hope that if Council selects a concept that we can work with, that we would issue an RFP or an RFQ.
Okay. And once that happens...
Similar timeline to this project.
Mm-hmm. I'm just, you know, I'm sort of going into too much detail on this issue, because my impression was that there is no money to effectuate a project like Fifth and Sonora. Like, we're not going to be groundbreaking sometime this year on that.
Not this year, no.
Next year.
I think you probably would be maybe 18 months from today, 14, 18 months from today to do a groundbreaking there, but your point's well taken. That's an asset that was purchased before the end of redevelopment. You heard Ms. Gold talk about her site in the downtown being worth $5 million. Eh, it's probably a good number. So we would have to bank home funds, as Mike's indicated, to go and tackle a new project somewhere else. Now, if the state of California allows us to repay the redevelopment agency loan back to the city by, if you remember the budget discussion last week, if we're repaying... to the city by, if you remember the budget discussion last week, if we're repaying the city $5.5 million, 20% of that has to come back to affordable housing. So presuming the state doesn't kill that funding source, $1 million a year, after it grows to that $1 million a year, would be available to this body.
But that would happen when? When would that, assuming that even doesn't get killed off?
This coming year, we'll get the first payment. They have approved for us, or they are approving for us to receive the first payment of, it's $1.2 million, so 20% of that number comes back to housing. The next year, I think it's 3.4 based on the projection, the year after that, 5.5. So if you figure several hundred thousand dollars growing to double that amount up to about $1 million a year for the next 12 to 15 years, unless and until the state of California decides they don't want to do that anymore.
Which could happen tomorrow.
It could happen tomorrow, sir.
If I could add, we also have some program income that comes to us and because we did perm loans on Veterans Village and on Cypress Senior Living, two projects that are in construction right now, we will have cash flow from those as well, roughly $120,000 a year.
I'm sorry, say that again. Where's that money coming from again?
We are, we will be the permanent lenders for the Veterans Village project and the Cypress Senior Living project.
So that money could be parlayed to another project?
Yes. So that, it'd be roughly $120,000 a year that comes to us over the next 30 years to do more projects.
Okay.
Mr. Snodden, can I just jump in and make a comment about what you said?
Please, of course.
I don't know that this is true, but it's just being a casual observer of Sacramento and what's kind of been important to them, as much as they wanted to kill redevelopment and take that revenue, they've been very concerned about affordable housing. And there's been a lot of legislation, proposed legislation, and for them to try to find ways of funding affordable housing. So I, it seems like they're really trying to find more mechanisms to do that, so just FYI.
And I hope that they do because our city is special in the sense that we're large enough where we can, you know, we're fortunate to be large enough to have all kinds of, you know, economic, residents that represent all the entire economic spectrum. At the same time, we know, you know, we don't have rent control, so it is what it is. And then we're left with the reliance mostly on federal funds for Section 8 and low-income housing. So obviously, it hurts when the state isn't helpful. Hopefully, I hope, you know, I certainly hope that they do help us out somehow. But the redevelopment going away, obviously, is a huge problem. So let me go to my next question, if you don't mind. But thank you, thank you, Ms. Friedman. Other than the state funding and something like the one that you just listed in terms of the veterans' housing, you know, leaving some money at the end of the day that can be used for other projects, do we have any, you know, in our revenue sources, in revenues, do we have any other source of low-income housing? For example, do we have, are any of our impact fees going towards low-income housing?
No, not, no. The program income I'd mentioned with the permanent loans on Vets Village and Cypress, that'll be program income, but that's the only one I can think of. We have some first-time homebuyer loans that get repaid. That money comes to us.
Okay.
We had negotiated on Doran Gardens, which just sold its final unit, for some money to return to us. I think that's about $400,000.
We do, however, have an arts fee, right? That we-
Yes, 1% of product cost.
Right. And does that money get used or can it be used for, for example, something like an artist colony?
It's primary use, Councilmember Snodden, it has to be for public art. It could be used for a public art component in a project.
Okay.
But it's for public arts. It's a fee that's paid in lieu of complying with the development standard. So at that point, it's used for the city then to use that money for public art, not for private development.
So it's sort of a yes and a no kind of a thing? If like an effort is made to, or, I mean, public art, what's public art? Does it have to be? What kind of manifestation does art have to take to be public art?
Oh, I probably have Mr. Hagani kind of expand on, but essentially, it's art that's in public spaces, spaces that the city owns or controls for its purposes.
Okay. So we're talking about actual art?
Correct, oh, correct. But it could take various forms. It could take, you know, it doesn't have to be a piece of art, it could be visual art, that sort of thing as well.
Okay. One more question. The 60% below AMI, would you explain that concept?
Oh, okay, yes. The tax credit program requires that the units be rented to households that earn between 30% and 60% area median income. So none of the units would be rented at higher than 60%.
Okay. Is that considered medium to low-income, low to very-low income? Is that following those qualifications?
Different funding sources define it slightly different, but if you take the traditional redevelopment, 50 to 80% is considered low. Below 50% is very low. And 30% or low is extremely low.
Do we have data on people who are seeking Section 8 or low-income housing in the city of Glendale as to what the breakdown is between low and very low? Do we have that, do we collect that data? Do we keep that data?
And this is specific to Section 8?
Both, Section 8 and, I mean, I don't know if-
We could produce that for you for our affordable housing projects. That'd be easy for me to produce for you.
Off the top of your head, none of you know, like what?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
What percentage of people who are somehow are on a waiting list or are currently on Section 8, where, what percentage of them falls into very-low as opposed to just low? So they would be 30% as opposed to 60%?
The requirements of the Section 8 program have a stipulation that those people, that at any point in time, when you pull people off your waiting list, majority, and I want to say it's either 75 or 80%, must be extremely low-income to be enrolled on the program. So you do have some flexibility if you were to pull someone who was not extremely low-income and place them on the program, but a majority of your Section 8 roles are occupied by households that are extremely low-income.
So is it fair to say that the people, the people who are on the Section 8 waiting list are very-low? I mean, that's a fact, right?
Correct. The people on the Section 8 waiting list tend to be in the category, and if you see, the city manager has put up the income chart, although not in your PowerPoint, it is something we had available. And it tends to be, the Section 8 roles, you tend to see in the 40% AMI numbers and the 30% AMI numbers.
Okay. So, and we have how many people on Section 8?
We have nearly 3,000 households on the Section 8 program.
Thank you. One last question. You know, and I know Mr. Mayor said that we've had four meetings on this. I don't know that I was on, at any of those meetings, so forgive me if this is somewhat repetitive. So how does this designation come about? Does YMCA have a preference for an artist colony as opposed to, let's say, elderly colony? I mean, how did that happen?
Well, to the extent-
Are they asking for it? Are they hung-
No, and that's a great question by way of the context. This housing, the original project that was submitted by the YMCA was more of the standard affordable housing development by a private developer. But to the extent that in the downtown district, the council, while not, obviously not supporting the previous concept, wanted to see something at least that would synergize with the downtown. Now, this project is immediately adjacent to the Arts and Entertainment District that has been established as part of the downtown-specific plan. And so the idea that you would have, the Arts Entertainment District is just off screen here, that you would have a project that would help catalyze one to the other, that's what made affordable housing in this, in this district, in this area, more palatable such that the council is willing to authorize the forward progress of an RFP. So could it be some other preference? Absolutely. But to the extent that it marries itself more naturally with the downtown, the idea of artist creative workforce manifest.
And last question, actually, Mr. Achua, to you. You, in your presentation stated, and I'll quote you, you know, basically you were saying that we're basically marrying the concept of affordable housing with, quote, "to serve the community that needs that affordable housing." My question is this, do we have a demonstrable need by the artist community for affordable housing in the city of Glendale? Do we have any data or statistics supporting anything like that?
We have a tremendous amount of anecdotal information from the folks at the Verdugo Job Center and certainly from our own interactions with people in the creative industry. I think what you're seeing on an industry trend level is that the studios that occupy our town and the town to the west are increasingly shedding employees and relying a great deal more on outsourcing and on contractors. Now, that contracted work is oftentimes sporadic, especially as you see production leaving the region to go other parts of the country and go international. What that means is that folks who may be in that industry or may be part of that workforce or maybe not even part of the motion picture industry, but consider themselves artists, well, there's really nothing that really attracts them to Glendale by way of affordable housing. Now, Meta, on the other hand, as we've gone through this RFP process, has had success in achieving the goal of affordable housing with, and demonstrating that there are a number of artists that are, however we define it, are in that low-income category, as evidenced by their success at the project in Burbank, the project in Noho, and then the project that they're building down in San Pedro. So to the extent that we, city of Glendale, know that? No, we know it through other people. But the beauty is that even if that is not a hard and fast rule, that that number is not something that I can flip through and point to, you know, the authority board knows that if you can't fill up the project with artists or creative workforce types, not to use a label, but to be convenient, then you know that the residual spillover units are going to be affordable. This is going to be an affordable project.
So nothing like a waiting list for Section 8 or 200 people showing up to each of three housing authority forums about low-income housing, nothing like that?
To the extent that those folks filled out questionnaires saying who they were, where they were, where they lived, but we didn't ask them, "What do you do for a living?"
And I promise this will be the last question. There's no geographic limitation as to who can apply, right? I mean, so anyone that has a legal right to reside in the United States of America can, and who's an artist, whatever that definition ends up being, can apply and go into this.
That is my understanding, with the exception, I'd have to defer to our staff if it's restricted, there is some level of restriction for California residents because of the California tax credits. Maybe it is national. I don't know if it's restricted to state.
It would be countrywide.
Countrywide, nationwide.
Nationwide.
That's true of all affordable housing projects.
All of our 9% rental tax credit projects have all been open out to the entire nation to be able to qualify, apply for and be selected.
Okay, thank you.
I think-
Can I ask a quick question? Actually, it was a question that Mr. Barnes asked, and I don't know if it was answered. We've had it answered in the past, but for the benefit of Mr. Barnes, he asked whether this was allowable by law with fair housing rules and all of that, so just repeat that answer to him.
To the extent that we can have different preference points for different types of goals that the council's trying to achieve, you cannot make it, and I'll defer to Mr. Azovak or Mr. Gashit, you cannot make it completely exclusive. It can be preferential, but not exclusive to it.
In the same way that our veterans' project is preferential for veterans, people in San Francisco, I know they've done other types of workforce housing. They've done workforce housing that gave preferences to teachers. I think other types of civil servants have had, you know, in other areas have had preferential affordable housing for them. So this is a model that's been done around the country and in California, certainly.
Mr. Snodden.
Well, on that, on that note, I think our definition of artist excludes seniors who don't work. And if we exclude seniors that don't work by the application of this, is this not de facto unconstitutionally discriminatory against seniors? Separate from a veterans' village where a veteran could be a senior veteran, I don't know about teachers. I'm looking, I'm looking at this definition here. And let me take it one step further. How about someone who is disabled and not able to work? Off the bat, they're discriminated against and cannot apply to this. So I think we've got a problem with age discrimination and disability discrimination. And tell me how that is not, in our definition of artist, tell me how that is not the case.
Let me add one caveat here. Speak for myself. I'm a senior citizen. I'm 74. And if I were to qualify, I'm an artist. Produce the evidence to the staff that I am an artist. If I were to move in there, if I was qualified and could move in, there's nothing to say that I can continue or start up doing art again, teaching young people art techniques, whatever. I assume I would qualify under, even though I am a senior, but I have an artistic background of one sort or another. Is that-
No, I think that's right, sir. If you look at the second criteria, person who creates imaginative works of aesthetic value, including but not limited to literature, poetry, photography, music composition, choreography, architecture, film and video, I don't know that any one of those, and similar tests throughout, but especially that one, excludes anyone who might be in a wheelchair, who might have a palsy. Folks who are disabled oftentimes are capable of tremendous talents and skills and folks who may be more advanced and more mature in age aren't necessarily, haven't necessarily stopped creating or contributing.
I would, I think, on the face, looking at the words, clearly, it doesn't say seniors do not apply, but as this is going to be applied, I think that's exactly what we're going to see. We're going to see seniors don't qualify. We're going to see those who are disabled because they're not creating films or videos or architecture. And I have a problem with that. Even though this particular definition of what is going to be the affordability components is not before us today, I cannot vote for this and I will fight against this until we nail, until we work this out. In addition, it is going to be a cold day when I open this project up to a unemployed actor from Santa Monica to come and take a unit over individuals who have lived in Glendale, who have participated in the community and are frozen out because they don't act or they don't create movies or architecture. So this is a problem that I have with this. Now, if council is ready to make some adjustments to the, to the ratio, that's fine. Now, let's, I'm glad this is up. We talked about economic synergy. Mr. City Manager, you said that a low-income artist is going to provide more economic synergy than a low-income non-artist, and I challenge those assumptions. I don't know how you can do that. I mean, they're low-income to begin with, so they're not out there buying the big-screen TVs or the vehicles or the clothes at Bloomingdale's across the street. I think they're going to be watching their pennies and be as frugal, and in many cases, I would argue, that an artist leads an even more aesthetic lifestyle than a non-artist. Now, that is my experience. That might be anecdotal, but I am not going to be voting for this unless we can make some adjustments today. Unless we can make some adjustments today. And I guess I'm going to go down kicking and screaming, which I do quite often, but I don't think it's fair. And as a representative of the community, my duty is to the community members to do the greatest good for the greatest number and not provide a low-income unit for the street artist from Venice who can't find a place in Venice, but there's something opening up in Glendale. And that's just where I'm at, so.
Can I ask a quick question?
Ms. Friedman.
We have, do we have a representative for Meta Housing here? Can you come up and tell us, have you excluded senior citizens from your, your similar project in Burbank or tell us what kind of breakdown there is?
If you're unemployed, how are you going to pay the rent?
Good evening, good afternoon, council and mayor. My name's Casey Burke, I'm president of Meta Housing. Our Burbank project is probably not a great comparison because it's actually an age-restricted senior citizen complex.
Oh, wait, so it is, they're senior citizens and they're artists? I was just told that's not possible.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute.
No, I'd like to finish it.
That missed in my comment, so that's fine.
Ms. Friedman has the floor.
So in other words, we could do this in such a way that senior citizens could participate? We can draw the definition in such a way that there would be senior citizens who would qualify under our definitions that you've helped craft, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Snodden.
Explain to us, so I'm clear, what you have going on in Burbank. You said they're seniors and they're artists. Age-restricted, that means no young folks?
That's right. It is an age-restricted.
Okay, that's different than no senior folks, so.
Correct.
I believe you can discriminate against the young to some degree, but not against the seniors.
True, you are allowed to. This property would not restrict, be restrictive only to families. And again, I believe what I've heard is that the definition of artist is still to be worked out, exactly how we're going to define that and what the- out, exactly how we're going to define that and what the appropriate population will be, but there will be no intention whatsoever on our part, or I believe on the city's part, to restrict to anybody disabled, age, or any otherwise.
Property at the other location. If a twenty-year-old guitar player who sits on the corner at Venice and Abikini, I know they don't, Abbott Kinney, they don't intersect, but near there, with his guitar case open, strumming away, low income, would he be able to apply to these low-income units?
He would not based off of age on our ones in Burbank or Hollywood.
Not Burbank. Let's talk the ones that aren't age-restricted here, because this is what we're having here in Glendale. We're not excluding the younger folks. He would be a perfect candidate, in fact, wouldn't he?
They would be able to apply.
I have another...
And I'm against...
I was still asking questions. Can I continue? Mr. Najarian interrupted me, but I...
You stopped.
I took a breath.
You make your comments, then you can do the rebuttal. Then the rest of us will get a chance.
I just have a question for staff, because, thank you very much. Mr. Najarian's worried about people from out of, from Venice coming here, but for our other affordable housing projects, can people from Venice apply to our regular affordable housing projects? People from out of Glendale?
We do have people from outside Glendale applying.
We do, so this would be basically no different in that people from out of the city could apply the same way they can apply to any of our projects because these funds come from the state of California and those affordable housing projects that are funded by the state or the federal government are open to anybody within California who wants to apply. So, if Mr. Najarian made anyone think that the other projects we've built are somehow exclusive to Glendale, that's not correct. People from Venice can apply, people from Santa Monica can apply, people from San Francisco could apply if they wanted to, correct? So this is no different than that. Thank you.
Are you, that completes your comments?
No, I haven't made any comments. I was just asking some questions.
Mr. Najarian.
Well, my comment is, the difference is, in all of our other projects, we are not excluding the residents of Glendale based on an artistic qualification. They have an equal shot with those people from other spots of the county, state, and even country, if I understand correctly. So, we could have someone from, pick a city in our great country, come in and have priority because they can strum a guitar over our own residents who do not have an artistic ability yet have the same low-income housing need that the other person does. And that is where I have a problem.
Well, then, we shouldn't be doing the veterans at Salem tomorrow where we're going to give veterans preference.
Quick question. So, anyone with expertise on these types of projects, is this a common type of project, low-income housing for artists? Is this something that's commonly available in the rest of LA County?
In LA County, I don't, I couldn't, I couldn't name how many there are. Meta themselves has done several, but it's also national.
Wait, wait, Meta has, Meta just said that they did one in Burbank, but it wasn't, it's not. It's an elderly, I mean, it's very specific.
It's a senior arts colony.
Right, so is there one like this one, artist colony, which is restricted only to artists, not the seniors?
And not seniors.
Is there such a thing?
Mr. President. Mr. President, could you come back and answer that question?
Maybe you know this, maybe you know what the answer is.
Long Beach is completely, I believe, that's...
And other than Long Beach?
We have four projects, three of them are age-restricted, and we have one family. The family one is under construction right now, will be complete by the end of this year.
Family one meaning?
It's non-age-restricted, similar to what we're discussing today.
So, it's not, it's not an artist colony?
I'm sorry, we have four arts colonies.
Oh, okay.
Three that are age-restricted and one that is not.
One is non, okay, thank you. Other than that one that's not, do you know of any other ones in LA County? And you may not know, I'm just asking, do you know of others?
I don't, off the top of my head, know of any other arts...
You don't? And the reason I ask is, you know, when we're saying that our low-income housing projects are open to everyone in the country, yeah, but that's a product that's available just about in any other municipality anywhere else, whereas this, this is a product, this is a very limited product that we're putting out there, something that a wide range of people are going to be interested in. So, it's, the competition for it is more likely to be from outside of Glendale, whereas the competition for a low-income housing project, which is available just about everywhere else, is not that likely to be from everywhere else. That's the distinction that I would draw between a regular, let's say, low-income or elderly housing and something that's very specific to someone's vocation or someone's art preference.
Mr. Quintero.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, and to the city manager, I have a meeting at four fifteen in the city of Burbank with two Burbank council members, Pasadena council members and attorneys concerning the airport. So, if we don't take a vote in the next four to five minutes, I'm going to have to leave without voting, which is okay. I just want to let everybody know.
I can vote now.
Well, can I make a motion then?
Sure.
I'd like to move, can I take these together?
The Housing Authority hangs together and then the council...
The two councils and then the two housing.
Okay, I'd like to move item one, who would be A and B for the council.
A and B, one A and B.
Is there a second?
Frank. Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Is that, okay.
I still have some...
I do too, here. I can make it before I vote, but I'll make my comments.
Well, listen to the comments.
One A and B is a council motion.
Setback variance.
Driving a five-foot setback variance, so I don't think that the applicant for the variance has met the four qualifications and the standards. There's no reason why those apartment balconies can't be pushed back. I haven't heard anything today about that.
That requires redesign of the project and therefore puts an jeopardy of the state nine percent tax credits, which is due within a couple of weeks, I think.
I understand that, but I hate to feel rushed, and I don't know why they designed it in that manner, where they needed a variance.
This has been before us four different times, the plans, I've seen the plans before. Nothing was brought up about any of these concerns to today. Now, why all of a sudden these concerns here?
Sir, if you would like, would you like the planning staff to tell you why they're recommending support of the variance?
It's the second through the fifth floor. It's not on the first floor.
I'd like to see why we need a variance.
Why, excuse me, Roger Kiesel in the planning division. They need a variance because the DSP classifies Kenwood Avenue as a residential street. Residential streets in the DSP require a six-foot setback, street setback. The building along Kenwood does have a six-foot setback, however, two sets of balconies or two balconies on each floor, the northern part of the Kenwood front edge encroach into the six-foot setback. So that's why the variance is, the variance is requested.
But why was it designed, I understand that, but why was it, I mean, they had a blank sheet of paper on this, why would they come back and say they needed to encroach? Why couldn't they just cut it back the first place?
Well, there were a couple of reasons that staff found. The two cited in the findings were this type of funding, and I don't know a whole bunch about the funding, requires a certain percentage of the units of a project to be three-bedroom. Most of the three bedrooms, they do have, they do have the minimum required three bedrooms in the project. Most are located where the balconies encroach into the setback. To push back the balconies would eliminate bedrooms or redesign, and so that they would not be able to comply with the funding requirements. That's the first reason. The second reason is the municipal code has minimum requirements for two bedrooms, and pulling the balconies back would reduce the size of the...
You couldn't do it.
But, Mr. Kiesel, I mean, let's apply that to the four findings that must be made. How many, how many does that touch on?
Well...
That's not even a finding, is that?
Excuse me a minute. Mr. Quintero's going to have to walk out of here in a minute, and a motion has been made and it's seconded. You know, with all due respect to Mr. Quintero, I think we ought to address the motion.
My comments are germane and are immediately relevant to the issue before us and have not been discussed previously.
Why not before this, the finality? We've had the plans. We've been briefed by staff.
The Ralph M. Brown Act requires all decisions to be made in the open, Mr. Weaver.
Of course.
I have, certainly within my right, and I apologize for my colleague time constraints, but these are questions which have not been addressed openly.
You didn't talk to the staff about it? You didn't talk to Meta about it? You didn't talk to the Y about it?
No, sir, I did not.
You didn't do that, so you are today.
Mr. Weaver, could I ask, in terms of calling for the question, that means that three of us have to vote in...
Correct, somebody has to call for the question. If it's seconded, it can go forward unless someone objects. If someone objects, then take a vote on whether to call the question.
All right, so I'll call for the question.
Second.
Well, I object, and I think that, let me state my grounds for the objection. The objection is that this item is a request for variance, and there must be findings made, and at some point, next week or thereafter, the findings are going to have to be stated in open session, and it would be absolutely inappropriate and a farce of the process to have no discussion on these findings when a member of the body has a legitimate question on the issue and to come back later and say, "These are the findings that were made." So I would object and make a substitute motion to overturn the call, the calling of the question.
I'll second it. All right, so let's take the vote.
You can take a vote on the substitute motion if you want, Mr. Sinayan.
Okay, take a, take a vote on the substitute motion. Mr. Passakim.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yeah.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
No.
Sinayan.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
No.
Okay, now vote for the call on the question.
Mr. Passakim.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
No.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinayan.
No.
Mayor Weaver.
All right.
That is the basis, I'm going to make, and I think Ms. Friedman already made a motion on...
The motions have been made and they were seconded on...
Motion on the, on that, on the floor.
On one A and one B.
That was on one A, one B. We have one C and one D for the authority.
Well, now, you need to make, there needs to be a vote on the motion to approve items A and B.
One A and B.
I need to state, I'm going to vote a certain way, I'll take thirty seconds. Thank you. In light of the fact that we have such a huge demonstrable, evidential, statistical proof of there being huge need for low-income housing and elderly housing in the city of Glendale, and in light of the fact that there's absolutely zero evidence of there being a need for an artist colony or artist low-income housing in the city of Glendale, in light of the fact that having an artist colony is a luxury, but not a necessity, I'm going to vote against it, and I'll vote against anything associated with this project.
Now, there's the motion on one...
And Mr. Weaver says, suggested I would like to, after the votes, make a quick comment, just in the interest of time.
Well, we have to do C and D.
Yeah, so...
If we get a motion, a second, understood. Okay, motion on one A and B.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
No.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinayan.
No.
Mayor Weaver.
All right. Now, is there a motion and a second on one C and D?
I'll move C and D, one C and D.
Any second.
I'll second it.
Okay, let me, let me make a quick comment. I have not been for this project from the beginning. I've been opposed to this project from the beginning. I think it's a wrong location. We're trying to help the YMCA, which is a noble organization, but I've, you know, been against it from the beginning. We're just so far along in the process that I think we should continue forward, but in my opinion, this has not been a good idea.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
I have a comment on C and D briefly.
Very briefly, because Mr. Quintero's already going to be late.
Well, I'm going to address my colleagues, Ms. Perazzian and Mr. Mincy, and you are on this board because you are representing a certain constituency. Mr. Mincy, your constituency, I believe, is a senior, the senior residents of Glendale. Ms. Perazzian, it's those low-income folks that obtain Section 8. It is incumbent on you, in this vote, to make sure that this project has as much low-income housing for residents of the city, not necessarily excluding only those who are non-artists. This excludes non-artists, and it is incumbent on you, your job on this, on this board and this authority, is to do what's best for the residents of Glendale and not exclude and play priority games with a certain group over another. And I urge you on C and D to vote no.
Could I make a comment? Quickly. I, I, we have, I've been on the Housing Authority a long time. Every one of our projects have been senior for several years, and then finally we did some family. But it's been every, you go around town here, you see beautiful senior apartment buildings that we have created, and, but I like the idea of the artist thing, but I'm not into, it doesn't have to be artist, far as I'm concerned, but I, we have been doing a lot for the seniors, and there's no way we can, you know, the need is so great that these seventy units are just a drop in the bucket.
Thank you. May we have a real call for one C and D.
Authority members, Friedman.
Yes.
Mincy.
Yes.
Najarian.
No.
Perazzian.
No.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
All right.
Chair Sinayan.
No.
Thank you. It's done. I thank you, everybody, for coming today. Good luck on that meeting today, Mr. Quintero. I'm praying for you. Okay, is a motion adjourned for the council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion adjourned for the housing?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we stand adjourned at four fifteen.